Call to order for the Town of St. John, Town Council meeting for May 14th, 2025. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a moment of silence if you could remain standing, thank you. You may be seated. Beth, roll call.
Mike Bovat.
Here.
Christian Jorgensen.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Wayne Pandini.
Present.
Gerald Swatz.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetinoff.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Thank you, Beth. Moving to item four, public comment. We have a Christina. Lamakis. I was gonna say that.
Good morning.
You brought Jimmy Johns.
From Jimmy Johns, yes, and I'm actually here today representing Logan's Love.
If you could just give us your name and your address, please.
Absolutely, my name is Christina Lamakis. My address is 1707 Susan Drive, I'm a Shererville resident. I am here today representing Logan's Love. Sorry.
Are you good?
My good friend Nicole Revolutis lost her son by a train accident. He was autistic and he eloped from his house. So Nicole has dedicated her life to giving back to the special needs community through starting this nonprofit organization which we call Logan's Love. With Logan's Love, we raise money for community events for special needs kids. Sorry.
It's okay.
I thought I was gonna do much better than this, I'm so sorry.
You're speaking from your heart.
I am.
You're good.
My son is also autistic, so it does, it means so much to me what she's doing.
Christina, we appreciate you being here, you're doing a good job.
Thank you so much, thank you. So we raise money for, to host events for the special needs community throughout Northwest Indiana such as Sensory Santa, Easter Icons, other events throughout NWI. We also have worked with all multiple towns in the area to provide Ben's Blue Bags. We have provided over 400 Ben's Blue Bags through Northwest Indiana. We've also equipped Dyer with Project Lifesaver, you know, which is gonna save lives for anybody who has elopement issues. So we are here today to cordially invite you all to our golf outing. I have some flyers for everybody. If you guys would like to come and golf, we would appreciate it. If you guys would like to sponsor a hole or donate, we would appreciate that as well. So I can pass out flyers to everybody. I also have some pamphlets if anybody is looking for more information on Logan's Love or is looking just to get involved with our group. We are always looking for volunteers to help us spread awareness for the special needs community and autism community.
I appreciate that. And you said you have someone, your son you said, or?
My son is also autistic, yes.
And what is his name and how old is he?
My son's name is Nicholas Hernandez and he is three years old.
Okay.
Yes, and I actually met Nicole, I go to church with Nicole, and I met her and all the other amazing people that make this group what it is. Prior to my son's diagnosis, I just fell in love with what they were doing and I started volunteering with them. And, you know, a year later, my son was diagnosed. So I like to say God knew what he was doing when he brought me to that group of people. They have helped me so much get through this last year myself.
Sure.
So we just really appreciate everybody's support. The community has been so amazing to us. We would not be able to do it without all of you guys and everybody else. So we, we are just here to say thank you and we hope that we continue to work together by providing Ben's Blue Bags and Project Lifesaver and all the amazing things that we like to do in the community and we would love to have you guys at our golf outing as well.
Even if we're not good, you can still?
Even if you're not good, it's gonna be a fun day, so.
Your business is in St. John and you have one in Shererville.
Yes, I recognized you right when I walked in the door.
You have always been good to the town, you've brought sandwiches to Public Works, to the Clerk's Office.
Yes.
So you give back to the community, we greatly appreciate that, too.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
And with that, Logan's Love, I think, Beth, didn't they bring something for the police and, I mean, first responders, didn't we have that?
They partner with Ben's Blue Bags.
Yes.
Which he's a firefighter for Crown Point and then he was at one point a part-time firefighter for the Town of St. John, Matt Kotacek. And they provide bags with different sensory-related items to help public safety.
Yeah, that's right, we got that.
As well as provide training to the first responders on how to handle somebody on the spectrum with special needs, yes. So it's definitely making a big impact in our community and we can see that. Everywhere we go, we see people that may see our shirt and they'll stop us and they'll ask us questions and wanna be involved. So we truly appreciate everybody's support.
Christina, thank you. Say it loud, say it proud, doing a great job, speaking from your heart. If you wanna pass out your information.
Thank you so much, thank you for having me.
Our pleasure.
You don't have to be a dipper or anything, it's gonna be a fun day and it's for a good cause, so we would love to have you guys and if you can't make it, if you guys wanna do a sponsorship or donate, you know, we would appreciate anything.
Thank you. And would you provide a copy of that to that gentleman way in the back there with the dark hair and the glasses?
Sure.
Yes.
Don't laugh, Joe, you're in the foursome.
What?
Don't laugh, you're in the foursome.
Oh, boy.
And he's also paying.
That'd be great, definitely. You're very welcome. Also, I may see some of you at the St. John FOP outing because you're gonna sponsor that as well, so hopefully I see you guys, that's the following Monday. Hopefully everyone has a golf outing. Anybody else over here with a flyer?
Mike? I'd like to make a motion to sponsor a $500, maybe the contest sponsorship from the Town of St. John. We could consider that?
So we have on the floor, we'd like to sponsor a $500 foursome? Is that what it is?
No, there's sponsorships on this thing.
Okay, contest sponsors.
One of them is a contest or refreshment, whichever, just a $500 contribution.
Okay, we have on the floor for a $500 contest sponsor.
I'll second.
My concern is that when you start doing to one nonprofit and one good cause, there's gonna be a million good causes to give to.
Mm-hmm.
And you're giving taxpayer money, that's, I'm not opposed to supporting this myself personally.
I think it's for individual, us individually, I think.
No, I was doing from, like, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're giving money to the DAV organization, which is a great organization. And I, it's just a motion, I'd like to see if we could do that.
Yeah, I think it's, and you make a great point, Jerry, but also it's a case by case and like Wayne had mentioned, Christina, she's a local vendor and she supports the community, she also gives to the community. So with that being said, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion would carry four to one for a donation.
No, Ann, I think that they could, with our, the small amount of 500 that we provide, they could probably do a lot more good than we could have done with 500 on our own.
Correct.
Given their resources, so it's, it comes back in spades to the residents of this town.
Right.
So I agree.
And it's not something that we have to do all the time either. We can be obviously selective, so thank you, everyone. Moving on with the agenda, item five, Kathy LaRue, St. John Township Trustee. Kathy?
Hi. Christina, is this your phone or no? Hi, good morning. Thank you for having me here this morning. It's, it's under my name, but I'm here this morning with the DAV Chapter 17 Commander, Bob Carnegie, and Service Officer Steve Braemer. And we just wanted to come before you this morning, first of all, to thank you for your support again for the DAV walk that was in the St. John Township Walk last year. And so we're just here this morning to just give you the information of the upcoming walk this year. It's August 23rd and it's on a Saturday and it will be also same thing, same police department. And basically, it'll be the same, a little bit of change-up of speakers or things like that. So what they're handing, what Steve is handing out to you is a flyer regarding the walk and then a sponsorship form. So if you choose to sponsor again, either individually or as a town, it would be greatly appreciated. We, as you know, the, all the funds that are donated are, go towards vets within the township. And we also, it's the, part of the reason for the walk and it's a very important part is to grow awareness to veterans that these, that DAV Chapter 17 or DAV is available to help them to get benefits and they're like liaison between them and the VA. And we have seen fruit from that and that's important. So I don't know if you have any questions, if you don't mind, they just wanna say a few words to you and then we can answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. All right, Bob, do you give us your name?
Bob Carnegie. I did live in Shererville, I live in Hobart and I've been, I've lived all over the world, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And the local representative of the chapter, DAV 17, that's based in Hammond and covers this particular geographical area. And our job is to meet veterans, find veterans, and help them understand the residuals after they serve that are offered by the VA. And if veterans don't take advantage of those benefits, they just go away. Those benefits are earmarked every year, they're budgeted every year, the VA has a huge, huge budget. You have a clinic in Crown, in Crown Point that is the Adam Benjamin Clinic and they take us from that clinic to Chicago. So just locally, there is a lot of support for veterans after the fact. And organizations like ours have no funding from the government at all, we fund ourselves. And so what we really try to do with this walk is create awareness of what we are and how we can help the veteran community in the community. So that's why we do this every year. I think it's a wonderful thing, we try to get a lot of kids involved. I even talked to the young lady that talked to you before because there is a place to have displays of information to share with the public that attend our event that may not know about certain things that the community offers. We don't just make sure we, they only talk about us and we're the only ones. We want people to be part of the community, we want ourselves to be part of the community, so that's what we try to accomplish. Steve, and just to let you know, what I find very interesting, both Steve and I are 100% disabled American veterans. Your neighbor could be. And that means something happened to us while we served that has compromised our capability of functioning the way a normal person may function in this country. Steve was in the Middle East, nine months, Steve?
Eleven months, 14 days.
Not that we pay attention to the days and hours when we're deployed, but you can tell what we do. I was in Vietnam for 13 months and I had 33 extra days so I could get out of the Army as fast as I got out. So there's a lot of manipulation of days and things like that, but both of us had different responsibilities, different activities that we participated in. It took me 40 years to realize I had issues that were spawned when I was in Vietnam. So that's the kind of people we run into all the time and we're here to help them.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Braemer, I'm a combat veteran out of Iraq, I'd served one tour, I received the Purple Heart while I was out there for injuries. You know, just to piggyback what Bob said, the organization explains the benefits, but it also helps the local community where if veterans come and they need help with rent, NIPSCO, we can help and we don't have a lot of red tape like the VA does. So I'm a product of that because I needed help at one point and somebody brought me to the DAV and then they helped me and then now I'm paying it forward. And since we started this with St. John, we've expanded our footprint in this area where now we're helping veterans out here. And it's a huge, huge commitment for veterans because there are so many benefits out there, but it could be so time-consuming, it could be so frustrating to deal with that you give up after a while. So with organizations like ours, you know, we're there to help them and guide them through the process. And that's, that's what we do. So I wanna thank you guys for letting us speak today and for helping us with this.
We appreciate you both being here and speaking on behalf of the disabled veterans. Thank you both for your service.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as Steve just said about helping with utilities and rent and mortgage and that, you know that that's what my office does as well. And so we actually have worked together since we began to partner. We've worked and I've called them and, and so it's been a, just a great partnership. And, and again, it's the St. John Township, so, you know, we, we appreciate whatever you guys, whatever you decide to do or how you decide to support the walk, but it was great to see some of you out there last year and what you did last year, so I don't know if you have any questions?
No, I'm familiar with it and I plan to sponsor myself and attend.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Moving to item six, approval of minutes. April 23rd, 2025, Town Council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving to item seven, public hearing. Ordinance 1867, an ordinance of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, annexing adjacent and contiguous territory and introduction to fiscal plan. Proofs of publication, Attorney Joe?
Proofs of publication have been tendered, they are in order, they are legal and at this time, the public hearing should proceed as follows.
Thank you, Joe. Opening remarks, Billy, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance 1867 addresses the proposed annexation of an 80-acre property located between the Monin and Norfolk Southern Railroad, specifically between Joliet and 109th. The petitioner has requested a PUD with a default zoning of C2, which aligns with the zoning of the land immediately south of the proposed annexation area.
Thank you for that, Billy. We're now gonna open the floor for any public comment. The floor is now open for ordinance 1867, the public hearing. If you could give us your name and address, please?
Sure, Chippikusmark 163 Evergreen Drive, Frankfort, Illinois. I work in the community. Is there an image that can be displayed of this property? For the benefit of the public?
And again, I'm sorry, I didn't get your address for?
163 Evergreen Drive.
In Frankfort? Frankfort, Illinois?
Yes, sir. I was trying to see if there was a packet that gave us some understanding of this. Is it, are there ever packets available ahead of the meeting that give more specifics prior to the meeting?
There's packets available and I can make one available to you if you'd like to leave your email address.
That'd be, that'd be great. I did go to the website, following the website link, but all that provides is an agenda and it, to help comply with transparency, that would be awesome if the town could put that information out there, I think that would be a great benefit to the whole community.
Yep, we're simply at the annexation state, stage at this point, so.
We're just annexing.
Just merely bringing in property into our town, so it could begin to be collected, we can collect property taxes.
No, I understand. And what was the address of the property, 109th and?
The actual physical property would be 10122 Parrish Avenue.
Okay, great. And so this is the, is this the west side of Parrish, north of 109th?
Yeah, it's west, it's west of Parrish.
West and north, okay, okay, very good. That, just wanna get some clarification on it, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
What is it that you do here?
I, I work for a home builder.
Okay, which one?
Olthoff Homes.
Ah, okay.
Just like stay on top of what's happening in the community.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, very good, thank you.
Yeah, it's the, I don't know how familiar you are, it's the property in between the two railroad tracks, between Joliet there.
Yep, very good, thank you.
Floor is still open, any other comments? With no other comments, we will close the floor for public comment. Floor is now closed. I'd like to move on to a motion to consider ordinance 1867 on first reading. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I'd be happy to make a motion to consider and approve ordinance 1867 on first reading and again, this is first reading only. State law requires us to hold two meetings on it. So, and again, this is simply for the annexation of the property and bringing in the property tax rolls.
Thank you for that. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Hey, we have support, we have a motion.
You gotta tie.
And a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Or a, motion carries four to one. Moving on to item eight, agenda items, A. Financial matters of the corporation, request to purchase, there are a total of seven requests to purchase and the combined total is $63,725.97 for approval. Beth, do you care to comment on any of these?
Sure, you have two from Lithographic Communications for window envelopes and utility bill forms. You have one from Holland Asphalt for the property at 9535 Joliet Street. You have one from Plum Valley Landscaping and that's to provide sod restoration for a previous water main project. You have one to Ferguson Waterworks and that is for the purchase of an active water meter, it sounds like.
Active.
Active. And then two for Al Warren, which is your diesel and unleaded fuel.
Thank you for that, Beth. Do I have a motion to pay the request to purchase?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to make a comment that I have no problem with six of these items, but the Holland Asphalt with the demolition, I don't think that was handled well enough. I think we should have gone to bid on that to see if we get some other options, so I will be voting no, but that's my reason behind it.
Billy, that work is completed, isn't it?
It is and it's just for a point of clarity, with the authority given by the unsafe building, we followed all, all rules that needed to be.
You were compliant.
Yes, we were compliant.
Thank you.
And work's already done.
Okay.
They're gonna get paid.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item two, accounts payable voucher dated May 14th, 2025, representing payment for payroll, supplies, services, and equipment rendered to the Town of St. John in the combined total of $1,724,681.25. Do I have a motion to pay?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item nine on the agenda, ordinances and resolutions, A, consider ordinance 1866 and ordinance amending Town Ordinance Number 1772, being an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of St. John, amending rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the waterwork system of the Town of St. John and all matters related thereto on second reading. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1866 on second reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item B, consider ordinance 1868 and ordinance amending Salary Ordinance Number 1842, establishing a schedule of wages, salaries, and benefits for employees, fire, and police personnel, and town officials, 2025 Salary Ordinance on First Reading.
So, Mr. President, thank you, 1868 will amend the salary ordinance concerning the training pay, following discussions with Deputy Chief Sharp and Chief Adams, all the future training will be compensated at straight time, if there's any questions. Deputy Chief Sharp.
Good. Hello, everyone. So basically, when we took a look at, looking at our budget, we noticed that our overtime budget, it's a blanket budget, it's been depleted pretty quick. We use that for when we have staffing issues, vacations, holidays, sick days, whatever, when we're not here. When we're using that for just training pay, it goes away so fast. An example, we had one month where we had 105 hours of training pay, that all goes, they should be paid at straight time, it all goes towards our overtime, which results in moving a lot of money out of our overtime budget. And we wanna use that budget for staffing, more staffing on the ambulance and fire trucks.
Okay.
Beth, you have any issues or you assume that you guys spoke about this one?
No, I don't have any issues.
Is this something that would help if it were to be adopted today on first reading? Is it something that would be helpful to be adopted on second reading as well with the suspension or is it, is that impermissible, Joe?
I'd like to do it in two separate readings.
Okay. Fair enough, just wanted to see.
All right, any other questions or comments? I think that's pretty straightforward, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1868?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item 10, Town Council Action, a motion to accept the amendment for the St. John Township Agreement. Kathy?
So what you have before you is the, regarding the fuel gift cards that we had signed the agreement back in '23. So the fuel gift cards, based on the, the agreement we had signed, the officers could only use those for fuel. And what has happened since then is I've come to, it's come to my attention that sometimes police officers will, if they have somebody that doesn't need fuel, but sometimes they need food, they've paid out of it, they've paid for it out of their own pocket. So this, this amendment to the inter-local agreement, community service agreement, just basically what it states is that they're allowed to use them in addition to fuel for food and beverages if needed. So that's it, that's the simplicity of it.
Right, I think most of us here could probably attest to officers we know that give money to people in need, that that's not uncommon. And so what you're saying here is it would be to discretion of the officer to give that out and then they could use it as needed.
Correct, correct, that they can either use it for food or it, or beverages, you know, non-alcoholic beverages, or for fuel at their discretion.
Very good.
Sure.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to accept the amendment for the St. John Township Agreement?
Motion to accept amendment, St. John.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome, thank you.
Sure. Moving on to B, motion to approve agreement with vertical assets for the Police Department Elevator not to exceed $1,400 annually. Billy, would you wanna comment on that?
Just a standard agreement for maintenance, for maintenance for the elevator next start.
What company is it?
Vertical Assets.
Where, I, yeah, I know, I saw that, I'm sorry, like, where are they out of?
Almerst is their main office.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the agreement with vertical assets not to exceed $1,400 annually?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item C, motion to allow police department to auction off a twenty-sixteen Ford Explorer, Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, item D, motion to approve the St. John Community Center Agreement and Documents. Any questions or comments on that?
No, they were provided before.
Yeah, we've had them for a while. Do I have a motion to approve the St. John Community Center Agreement and Documents?
Mr. President, before you vote, I just wanted to tell you that both Billy and specifically Beth have worked very hard on compiling those documents, they've been in front of me for legal review, everything's good to go, but staff's been working, administrative staff has been working really hard regarding that.
And I was aware of that, but thank you mentioning that, Joe. Thank you, Beth, Billy. I know that's a lot of work, a lot of effort.
Has there been any amendments since the last time that we received them?
No.
Okay, so nothing changed, you didn't change anything, or?
No, nothing, nothing's been changed.
Just curious.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, item E, motion directing Adam McAlpine Consulting Incorporated to advertise for bids for Prairie West Park Parking Lot Expansion.
So I have question on this before it comes up as a motion.
Sure.
It's for a consulting fee, is this, is this to evaluate the property, or is it to come up with, uh, a design for a bid? I mean, we tried to do this a couple of years ago, expand this property, but ground samples showed that the ground was not acceptable for a parking lot, and I'm wondering if this is on the exact same parcel. Do you recall that, Wayne?
I don't know if, if it was not acceptable, but I think that whole park.
I think it was going to cost us a lot more money, because we had to remediate that soil or something.
Well, when they pu, when they bid that, the last half of that addition on that parking lot, they just went down so deep, they put down brick, and it's lasted for sixteen years. You're not going to have a lot of trucks on there, a lot of heavy weight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that, that property was donated by a developer, it's, uh, there's a lot of peat out there, and that's probably why we got it, but I think, I don't think there's going to be a problem if they, I think they're going to dig down twelve inches.
I'd just like to make.
Put a lot of stone, it's.
I'd like to make sure that that, that ground is going to be satisfactory, so if that's going to be part of the consulting package before we start building something, I would, I think that's important.
It says McAlpine Consulting, but he is an engineer, he's, that's an engineering firm.
Yes, he is an engineer. Is this a public works project, then? Is it following up Public Works?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful.
Public Works and slash Parks Department.
I just wanted to point out, I think we need to make sure that that soil is good before we build on it.
From what I, from what I know from discussions with Adam, that it, it is good to go. Uh, if you have any of those old, uh, studies or, Wayne, whatever, feel free to.
Probably Phase one, Phase two.
I, I think at one time that, after they'd done the, the soil boring, it was, they were going to do it. They just, but it, the price went, went high, so I think they were, they were fine with it, that just.
Okay. I just wanted to be careful, that's all.
Yeah, and.
Because I think the price went up because we were going to have to do something to the soil. I think it almost doubled the price. I think we're in the two-hundred range, and I think it jumped to almost five, if my memory serves me correctly.
I don't think it was five, but I think it's because the engineers got involved.
Well, if I remember correctly, it also had to do with the CDBG grant, so I think when you start taking grant money, the requirements start to become more.
Stringent.
Stringent. So I think taking, and I could be wrong, but I think the thought process was taking it outside of a grant and just letting the town do it, takes away some of those add-on requirements to be eligible for that grant funding.
Correct.
Like if you're doing CCMG, you have to do the ADA thing, you know, there, and then it just starts jacking up the.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the project, I think it's important and it's needed, I just want to make sure that we, we do our due diligence before we start building on, on ground that's maybe questionable. Yeah, are, are you helping develop, um, the pit specs?
Yeah, I've been through it with, with Adam, yes. I sat with him, and again, the.
They haven't completed them yet, though, huh?
We're going out to bid, yes, we have.
Okay.
Everything that we need.
I'd like, I'd like to see that before it goes out.
That's fine.
Um, because there's probably some attachments that have to go on to it, because it's a public works project.
Okay.
Um, but if you would send that over to me before it goes out.
Yeah.
I can, I can get it back to you in a day.
Okay.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, motion directing McAlpine Consulting to advertise for bids for Prairie West Park Parking Lot Expansion, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item eleven, reports and correspondence, Town Council members. Any comments or?
I see what you did, did you scan that? So just, I want to make everybody aware that, um, monthly, we're going to try to do a little, um, fundraiser type of thing for St. John Animal Control with a dine-out at different restaurants in St. John. Our first one's going to be, um, Friday, May thirtieth, at Culver's. Um, just, we'll just mention St. John Animal Control, and, um, twenty percent of all the proceeds for that day go to, or, I'm sorry, from three to eight, go to, uh, St. John Animal Control. Just trying to help them out a little bit. Um, uh, and Scoopy will be there, Scoopy, the, so, I bring kids.
The Culver mascot.
Culver mascot, we'll be there, Scoopy will be there.
Scoopy.
Yeah, this will be our first one, and we'll, we'll have one once a month.
Anne, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm sorry about this, but, um, I'm committed to a golf outing that day, but I'll go ahead and, and donate or something like that if you can take a mule it for me.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Go order some burgers, I'm Christian's.
Burgers for everyone on Jordison.
My son has a baseball game that day.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll be grub hub that day. So, thank you for that, Anne.
No problem.
That is so worthwhile. Anyone else?